This is Casper.
Here.
This is O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Parnell.
Here.
This is Schaefer.
Here.
And Mr. Lovell.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Linda.
I'll second Kelly.
Okay, discussion. All right, Jenny, please call roll.
This is O'Connor.
Yes.
This is Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
This is Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Lovell.
Yes, this moves us on to superintendent's update under the first item under the board work session.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. A few things tonight. The first one is just a reminder about our graduations. We have each graduation on Saturday at nine noon, three and six. West graduations at noon, three and six, and just ask the board to, I forgot to put this in my update, but to be there about a half hour before it starts, just so that we're in the right location. So knock on wood, the weather looks really, really good this weekend, and we're looking forward to honoring our graduates. The second thing I wanted to mention is the executive team, the curriculum department and tech teams, we've been working on what school's going to look like for the fall, and we have 80 days until school starts, and so we are looking at a couple of options. But I think first and foremost, people want to know that, people need to know that we want to go back to a traditional setting as much as we can, as much as we're allowed. So we sort of took that approach and we're dialing it down from there based on the recommendations we have now, but we know that those things are going to change. It just feels like things are opening up, and hopefully we can get closer to what school looks like in the fall. I will say that we're going to be able to offer, though, a virtual option K-12 next year for, for a variety of reasons. A couple of those reasons would be if families don't feel comfortable yet sending their child back, if they have underlying health issues, if somebody in the home has health issues. We'll be able to provide a robust virtual learning environment for those families, for those students that want to go virtual next year. I think that'll also help. We've been talking about this for a while, with maybe some of those traditional homeschool parents now that maybe want to come back to Lakota. This gives them another option, another opportunity too. So I think there's benefits on both sides. And going, flipping back to the traditional learning model, we're building that out now and what that looks like. And so we, we'd hate to work on this and put something out, say, in two weeks, and Governor Dewine announces something different or opens it up even more. So we're building it out based on information we have. We're working with our Health Commissioner and working on what the social distancing look like in our buildings, do we have enough space to pull that off? And so those are sort of the questions and plans that we're developing right now. So I wanted to mention that to everybody, based on the surveys that we've been putting out.
Matt, I've got two questions. One, have you seen a slowdown or a lack of registrations with kindergarten for this upcoming year based on everything going on? And two, was there anything from the survey that went out? I'm assuming that maybe you want to highlight any results that are driving you towards any of the work that you're doing?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of things on that, Brad. So I would say probably about two months ago, the kindergarten registrations were off, were low, but that's sort of caught up. We've sort of put another out there for that. So it's pretty, not, not the same, but not as far off as maybe you'd think during the shutdown during the pandemic. So it's getting closer to what we expected, but it is a little less. And then two, I think probably the underlying impact of the surveys were that, you know, people were saying if we do have to do remote, or the ones that wanted to do remote, that, that for some kids it worked, for some it didn't. I'd say probably for the most part, that when we do it in the fall, it has to look a lot better than what it did in the spring, and we know that. And we've been building sort of towards that and building towards that with some of our colleagues in other school districts. So I think that's part of it. I think too, Brad, that people just want to get back to normal, right? They want to be safe. They're a little bit, you know, so our kids, the survey really showed us that the kids really miss their, their peers, their colleagues and their teachers. And so we're trying to get, make it as, as normal as we can coming back while still being safe. I think those were the, sort of the overall sort of guiding highlights on that. But again, I've been telling people, you know, we're going to have a K-12 virtual option for those families that want to do that, again, for a variety of different reasons. And then we're taking traditional learning and then dialing it down to safe, applicable, what we can do. And so again, probably our biggest challenge right now is looking at space and social distancing and the guidelines. So again, that can change tomorrow, but we're trying to look at our footprint and being able to put everybody where they would need to go to pull this off.
Matt, do we have any indication from the governor's office when he may make some sort of recommendation? That changes daily also, but.
It changes daily also, and I have Zoom meetings every single day about what's coming. And, you know, part of, part of the, the biggest thing that came out just recently was that kids could do athletic training again in small groups and social distancing. So that makes me think that sort of the, the restraints are going to be loosened up as we get closer to August. That took care of some of the issues, I don't say take care of, but took some of the issues now. But, you know, those guidelines in terms of our facilities and using that, that was still just for Lakota, just for students, not for public yet. And essentially, schools are shut down still through June 30th, with the exception of some of the training that can go on. So I think we're just starting to see some signals that things are starting to open up, whether you agree with that or whether you don't, and things like that. We're starting to see some opening up. I mean, the restaurants and everything else, the, the wedding reception size of 300 with social distancing. That's, you know, and then we're trying to equate that to what does that lunchroom look like if we come back in the fall? And so those are some of the things that we're looking at and discussing. But I think the big thing too is with the social distancing, we're going to have a little bit of a concern about space. I know we have facilities and a lot of room, but if you're talking about, you're only allowed to have, you know, six feet space, you're going to limit that to 12 to 15 kids in a room. And so what does that look like for staffing? What is that like for space? So we're playing those scenarios out right now. We had a two and a half hour meeting today about it. We had our, one of our attorneys that are helping us guide us through some of that as well, and we're back at it in the morning.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we plan to have a board discussion about that, about all the options available to us?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, when do we plan a board discussion on all the options available?
You mean traditional versus online? So, I mean, I mean, I think it's part of the conversation now, but as soon as we get more built out, again, we're building out what the traditional looks like. We don't want to get too far ahead of that because that can change any day and week by week. So as soon as we have something firmed out, I'll make sure that all of you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of time between now and, and then.
Right.
Relatively. To answer Kelly's question, Mike Dewine will make decision the first Wednesday in November.
Maybe. But again, I think it's safe to say, and, and Linda, back to your, your question, for the families for a variety of different reasons that want to do that online option, we're going to be able to do that. And again, that, that for a variety of reasons, health reasons, just concerns and things like that. But again, I like that option for our kids and for our families, so.
Okay. Matt, are you familiar with a group that's on social media, Ohio Families Against Hybrid Schools?
No.
Okay, they, they signed up like 6,000 people in a day. So just for your own knowledge, you might want to go Facebook and just follow that group.
Yeah, and I, and again, we got, we got that going on. And then, so in my mind, and back to Linda's question, I think in my mind, we have that virtual option for people, K-12. But we have, and then the other, the other flip side of that is we have the most traditional that we can have. And so I'm not even sure that that's going to be what, what I would call a hybrid. I guess it could, depending on what guidelines or, or restrictions come out from the governor's office. And quite frankly, what's going to change, to your point, Todd, between now and when school starts?
Yeah, right. You're exactly right. It could change for the better. So we'll see.
And, and the other thing is, you know, and I think we did a really good job with pivoting when we had to shut it down and go remote. And if it flares up, and who knows, and I don't, you know, that's, that's a conversation for a different day, but if it flares up again in October or November, we might have to shut it down and go remote again. So, and that would be out of our hands, but we'll be ready if that happens.
Matt, what's the conversation around busing currently speaking with the guidelines and everything? I know that was a question on the survey as well.
Yeah, so on the, on the busing issue, and that has even come down a little bit. The guidance from the Health Department came down. So before it would have been, if I remember right, when they were talking about social distancing in the beginning, we would have had buses with about 12 to 15 kids also. Now the recommendation coming out of Columbus is one student per seat. So you're talking half of a bus full of kids unless, and they said this was the caveat, unless they were in the same family, then you could have them in the same seat. So if that's the case, and you're talking 24 kids on a bus, on the surveys that we put out, it was almost exactly 50/50 in terms of whether they would put their kids on a bus or not. So transportation's a big issue for this too. And again, I know that these conversations are happening in Columbus, both in the governor's office at ODE and the Health Commissioner's office, because we're, we're having conversations about that, and what does that look like? And, and those are happening all the time. So I think, I don't think it's, that they're waiting on this. I mean, maybe it is, but I think it's more of they wanted to take care of the businesses, the restaurants now, schools are essentially over, and let's take care of some other things before we roll out what the plan looks like for schools. That doesn't mean I want to wait till August 1st or July 1st. I mean, hopefully the sooner the better. But it's going to be, we're going to be in a state of flux and pretty fluid until school gets started.
I think it's a clarification question. First of all, I want to say thanks for sending out the survey information. As a board member, I think it's great if we can always see what those results are.
Yeah.
When, when surveys are sent out. So thank you for that. I did not see on the survey a question about traditional per se. And I, listening to you, I kind of think you're using hybrid and traditional interchangeably. Am I understanding that right?
I mean, I don't think I'm using traditional or hybrid interchangeably. I think in terms of, let me back up a second. In terms of the survey, all of us want to come back and all, I mean, that's sort of an assumption that we want to be as traditional as we can, and we want our kids back. We want all of our staff back to get back to doing what we do best. I think the, the issue is it's not going to be a three-tier system of traditional, hybrid and remote. It's going to be as traditional as we can be following the guidelines and structure. So if somebody wants to call that a hybrid, they can. I mean, we might have to go, you know, two days, two and a half days halftime, depending on social distancing. I don't think that's going to happen. I just feel like things are loosening up and going back to what we're used to. So I don't see it as sort of a, a three-tier of traditional, hybrid and remote. I see it as traditional, as traditional as we can be with the guidelines and structures in place that we're required to follow.
I think hybrid was the term that was used. It was either remote or hybrid were the two choices that were given on the survey.
They were. And, and again, I think the assumption is we want to be traditional, but if these are our options, these are our options.
I have to say bluntly, many of those things that I saw seemed completely unworkable in so many ways. So I am hoping that the input that the state's getting is going to make a difference as well.
I thi, I think it will. I think people want to come back. And again, I just think it's just getting that guidance. Everybody wants to be safe, and I get that. And so, and so do we. I mean, you got to remember, I mean, everybody knows this. One of our mission statements all the time is we want everyone to be safe and secure. And so I think this follows that too. So we don't want to put anybody in jeopardy. That's why I think it's good that we have the virtual option as well.
So I'm going to ask as one board member before that decision is made by the district, that the board have a public discussion about it. Would appreciate that.
What discussion would that be?
I'd stop.
A discussion on all of the options. So the board has the chance to weigh in before that decision is made.
Okay, to me, the options are we're going to do virtual, and then we're going to do as traditional as we can.
That's what it sounds like.
But those options, what, what those options are comprised of can change in the next three weeks. So we're not ready yet for that discussion.
Right, no, we're not.
We should discuss it before we put anything out to the, the public.
It almost seems like it's less, like almost less of options and more of, as we head back into traditional sense, these are the stipulations that we have to address. This is how we're planning to do it, or there's a virtual option, right?
That's what it's.
Okay, so more of a discussion around, these are the things that we're wrestling with. This is what we've decided or we want to decide against. Are we, are you, I know it's, you have no idea, Matt, but I mean, would you assume that, that conversation, like in our second June board meeting?
I, I, I hope so. I really hope.
We have one in July, but I mean, after that, you're going to be talking, we're coming back.
We could do a special board meeting too, right? I mean.
Once we get the information.
We get the info and stuff, I think we can do that. And, I mean, there's a lot of work now going into the different options of the virtual side versus as traditional as we can get. So we're building that out right now. And it's, it's a building. It's truly a, we're building it as we go. At least we have, at least we have 80 days.
There's a, there's a lot of conversation, whether it's lip service or rather it's honest about local control. And that's why I think it would be great to have a conversation. And I think there are legitimate fears and concerns. And how do we address those, whether they're within those, those options or not? How do we address those in the best way for parents and families and staff members? So again, I look forward to the discussion.
I appreciate that you're building out options for people so that they can have a choice of what they're doing. So you'll be able to address people and that we're not going to lose families to other alternatives, and that we'll be able to keep them within the Lakota family.
Yeah, that, that's going to be big for us, I think. And I've been hearing that a lot too. And I think too, to, you know, we had that community conversation a while back with the homeschooling families. Might get some more back. That's an option too, if they can go the virtual route, so. Anybody else?
Okay, Jenny?
Okay, Adam, can you bring up those slides?
Where's Adam?
I'm checked out.
Wake up.
I know he, he practiced earlier to make sure that, here we go.
There you go.
Sometimes there's a delay with the whole Zoom. Okay, so on the agenda tonight is the approval of the five-year forecast for May. We've talked about this the past couple of meetings. And so just to kind of review where we are, next slide, Adam. What we've done previously is we've taken a look at our charts and graphs to kind of look at where have we been, where are we predicting that we're going to go to in the future? And we always go back to 2010. I've kept that on there for purposes of this planning as well. This is a graph that's showing revenues predicted into the future. You will see that next year, we're predicting that 2.7% reduction. That's basically the state foundation change that we're predicting. And then not a whole lot of growth moving forward. Next slide, Adam. This is just a chart to just kind of show you what has changed since November. So to take a look at just revenues, what did we predict for revenues for 2020 through 24? And what are we predicting now in May? And the difference on this forecast is just under $50 million less in the forecasted period. And you'll see that some years are a little bit more than others, but even this year, the cut that we received from the state definitely was not something we were predicting in November during this forecast, the forecast. A lot has changed. Next slide. These are expenditures, same thing. We have the biggest one that you're going to see here moving from 2022 through 24. And the big difference there is because of what is happening in the nation right now with unemployment, record unemployment, and people being asked to take cuts in their pay, we, we are not going to even try to make a prediction what any kind of growth in salaries or wages are going to look like beyond our negotiated agreements right now. So when you take out that in a business that is people-oriented, a service type of business, you're going to see that that expenditure growth then is reduced down to, you know, less than one and a half percent in those future years. Next slide. Again, on the expenditure side, you can see that with making different assumptions, we are also assuming that just like our revenues are going to reduce, the expenditures are also, with the assumptions we're making, definitely you can see reductions there. But again, the majority of those are in 22 through 24, where we're not even going to make a prediction about wage increases. Next slide. This is our chart that shows revenues, expenditures and cash. And this chart definitely looks different than what it did before, that green line, which is our cash balance. You know, it, while it was dipping down into those future years, it was not dipping as far down as what this one is showing. I also added a yellow line just so we could kind of take a look at what does our board policy say on cash balance? We have a board policy that says that we will adhere to a 90-day cash balance. So that yellow line is just trying to predict, you know, how close are we in 2024 with these predictions? How close are we to that 90-day cash balance? Next slide. Again, just trying to show you what, you know, we've got changes in cuts in revenue. We are making predictions which would be saying we're spending less. But overall, it is taking a hit on our cash that we're predicting. And next slide. So in summary, when we talked about our forecast in November, if you recall, we were adding freshman busing. And at that time, because we were adding that to our five-year forecast, there was a spending deficit that was a result in 2022. And there was a directive to the superintendent and treasurer of, hey, we need a plan on how to eliminate that spending deficit in 2022. Well, fast forward to May of 2020, and we have different issues to focus on now. I wish the, the estimated spending deficit in 2022 was our only issue right now. But, you know, currently now, we've got a pandemic, the, the world has entered a new financial crisis. And so I know we've talked a lot about, you know, what are our priorities? The safety and security of our staff and students remain at the forefront, as well as, you know, maintaining our core business. Our business is education. And so I know Matt has talked about, you know, in his update, what's that going to look like in the fall? We still don't know exactly, but that's still our, our focus, our priority. I also put on here, we have planned for a rainy day, and I don't want us to forget that. You know, we, we put into place a board policy where we establish a budget stabilization fund. We started transferring money into that last, well, actually this July. And we will have a balanced budget again at the, the end of this year, which will enable us to transfer more money into that. So it's, that's a good thing. Our cash balance, we're predicting at the end of 2020 to be four times more than what it was in 2012. So we have planned, but there was a lot of work that went into where we are right now that is going to help us. But fiscal sustainability, it is a long-term goal. So our approach to how do we get through these next few years and beyond, we've got to have a multi-year approach to this. And as we plan out, what does the fall look like and beyond, we just have to focus in on, this is a long-term goal. And maybe, you know, we do have to dip into our savings, but what is that plan moving forward so that when we're out of this, that we get back on our feet again? And it can't be business as usual, status quo. I think we all know that. You know, just like the rest of our community is dealing with, it's a new day. It can't be status quo. And it's not in any of our conversations. And it's, it's not that way with our financial picture either. So that's what I know at this moment. I hope we will know more. Maybe mid-June, by, by then, maybe we will know what cuts will look like for fiscal year 21. I'm hoping we know sooner rather than later. That will also help us plan better. But at this point in time, it's, it's day-to-day, and we make the predictions the best we can and change them accordingly as we know more. So questions?
What are you hearing out of Columbus for the future cuts for next year?
Really what I am hearing is that the governor wants to see where we finish up in May before there's any kind of determination. No one is saying that there will not be further cuts. So definitely to expect the next round of cuts. I will say that Matt and I, in our calls with the Alliance, there's a lot of conversation around how the cuts should be structured in the future because these cuts, this first round of cuts were equalized, if you will. So the, I don't want to say poor or rich, but the less wealthy districts, and that's, they, you know, attribute wealth, and it's, it's property wealth and income wealth. If your district was considered wealthier, then you took a bigger hit on the cuts. They were equalized. So there is conversation around doing that differently in the future in making it a more equal and not equalized cut in the future. But it's really, everyone is making guesses right now.
Because it's my understanding that the CARES Act money was distributed differently than the cuts were distributed. So some schools had significantly more CARES Act money to fill in those gaps from the cuts, where they may even have ended up with higher funding than what their cuts were.
Correct, because the CARES Act funding was all built around Title I, and Title I is, is built on economically disadvantagement within districts. So if you had high, a higher population of just economically disadvantaged pupils, then you've got more of that CARES funding. And then as far as the cuts to funding, you also receive less of a cut if you had a higher population of economically disadvantaged people. So you are correct. That's the way that works.
Jenny, what I'm hearing floated legislatively for fiscal year 2021 was 10% as a possibility in loss of state funding. Are you hearing that percentage?
That is what we are predicting in the forecast. That is something that, that we have heard quite a That is something that, that we have heard quite a bit. Um, but I will tell you, there are other districts who are taking this year's cut and applying a multiplication. They're saying, okay, we're going to predict we're getting two or three times more uh, based on the cut we got this year. So across the board, um, there was a survey that went out across the state with treasurers and I looked at that this morning. Um, there's not a consistent way people are, um, trying to predict what that cut will be. But the ten percent I've heard quite a bit and that's what we have in our assumptions.
I think the other thing that our community should just, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, I think that another thing our community should be aware of too is we don't even know the cost of operation for the fall. Right? Like we really don't know what the restrictions are going to have on our schools. So even as we look at the five-year forecast and we look at next year, I mean, all you're doing is holding up against a traditional funding structure in Lakota, right? Like what does it take to educate our students in this environment and the history, past history? But looking this year and going, well, if we can only put twenty-four kids on a school bus or we can only, um, there's just so many unknowns right now that it's, that again, the five-year forecast is, it's a predictive tool, but we don't even know.
Yeah, Brad's, Brad's absolutely right. It's, I mean, a forecast is just that and as good as the accuracy of your assumptions, we just don't have the like those assumptions at this point.
Snapshot.
And after we build out those plans, you're exactly right. We, we know what traditional looks like or looked like. Um, i- if it's traditional with a remote option, then that's even different from what we've seen in the past. And so as we're building out these options or, or looking at different options, we are also looking at what are the costs associated with each one of those options as well as timelines. So you're exactly right, with each option comes different costs.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Jenny, I really appreciate the work on this and agree with the assumptions that you've made. And obviously it's very concerning to see what we see in the budget with now moving to an unbalanced budget for this entire five-year forecast. And I think that it just needs to continue to be a discussion with the board. And as we have that discussion around next year, how do we move back to a balanced budget after we've dealt with this whole situation? And I think that still remains the priority and certainly is for me. And I'd like to see that discussion continue on an ongoing basis.
Any other questions? I, I agree, Linda, I think that has to be the goal is, you know, we, yes, we have planned for a rainy day. Into our, our cash, but we've got to have a plan to get, get us back to the point where we have been.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Agree a hundred percent.
I think we all agree that that's the, the way to go.
I just think we have to be aware that we don't even know if it's an expenditure issue right now or revenue issue. I mean, we know our revenue's down, but we don't know what the model's going to cost in the fall or the future. So to start spiraling and I, I say that, you know, like we just don't know. And so I think hopefully there's going to be clarity in three to six months that will help us lead us back to that conversation of balance. Uh, but for me, my head can't even wrap around.
It's a pie in the sky.
Where the money's going.
Yeah.
In the fall.
You're, you're right. We don't have, we just don't know.
We don't know.
I think it's both a revenue and an expenditure issue.
Yeah.
The debt.
I agree. I, I mean, and I think that, you know, on the revenue side, we have to plan for cuts. And on our expenditure side, it's not business as usual and we need to start tightening our belt. And we have done that in our budget hearings. We're reducing our building budgets by twenty percent. All department heads are looking at how can they, um, reduce spending so that we can cut a little bit now so that, you know, in the future, we don't have this huge hole um, to deal with. So we are trying to make some really smart decisions around expenditures while still focusing on that educational program that, that we want to maintain for our, our students. So, um, we're, we're trying to be real creative right now.
I also think that what we're going through is mirroring what a lot of our families are going through. There's a lot of unknown and uncertainty in their futures with the loss of jobs, the loss of income, all of those issues. And just like you said, start by tightening the belt. Thanks, Jenny, it's good work.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, moving on to the adoption of the five-year forecast. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second, this is Julie.
Okay, discussion? Hearing no discussion, Jenny, would you please call roll?
This is O'Connor.
Yes.
This is Schaefer.
Yes.
This is Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's moving, thank you. This moves us to the public comment section of the meeting. Do we have any public comments? Either by email or on the virtual?
We did not receive any emails in advance of the meeting, so.
Are you raising your hand?
We are prepared if anybody wants to utilize the, the raising of a hand and I do see one.
Okay.
Hi.
Hello?
Okay, can, am I heard?
Yes, we hear you. Can you please state your name and your address and then you have three minutes for comment?
Uh, this is Vanessa Wells and I am at four four eight seven Aspen Drive. Um, I just had a question on the, it was something on the agenda last week, the public participation at board meetings. Um, could you please clarify as to what in this policy can't be done during a virtual meeting with the public? Um, or when, when is the suspension of this going to be lifted? Why, it was just left up in the air as far as like indefinitely?
Oh, okay, I can address that, but we'll wait to see if there's any other comments to address your questions. Um, if you're through, do we have any other public comments? I can't see, so somebody will have to.
I, I don't see anyone else raising their hand.
Okay, um, I'm not sure I understand Vanessa, your question. I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, you're asking the conversation we had the last board meeting around public comment, what are we not doing or why did we have to suspend the policy? Um, the reason the policy had to be suspended in the format is because we're not meeting in person. Um, however, we're giving multiple opportunities. And so what we wanted to make sure with legal was that we were actually doing, uh, we, we weren't saying we were doing one thing, but doing something different. And because we're in a virtual setting and that's not how our policy was written, we wanted to make sure that we were doing what we needed to do. However, um, we are actually giving our, um, we're actually giving our community more opportunities to participate than we actually ever have because we give them the option to submit emails that can be read. Um, and we're giving them the opportunity actually to speak virtually, um, in this session. So, um, we're not decreasing participation, we're actually increasing the ability to participate. I don't know if that.
I think the, uh, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I think the policy issue at the last meeting was more an issue of semantics, just the way that the, uh, policy was written.
I think, I think you're right.
To suspend that in order to do the virtual comment that we're doing now.
Okay.
Right, we're not doing.
Right, I was just, just clarifying that. Thank you for your answer, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that that's really important for our community to understand is that we are, we are continuing to pursue. Um, the only thing that we've really suspended is our community conversation piece um, in how we're interacting with our community at this moment, but we're still doing our coffee chats. We're giving multiple ways for people to participate in our meetings, uh, moving forward. So we're trying our best to work out different and unique ways to be able to connect. And as always, I think I've said this at every meeting, um, our community is able to go to lakotaonline.com, go to the admin, I think it's under admin tab, board, and there's a button there that you can hit and you can email all the board members, um, at any point. It goes to all of us so we can see your comments and your questions. And, um, I, I, I try or we try to get back to those within twenty-four hours. Okay, any other, um, public comments? Okay, uh, hearing none or seeing none, I'm not sure which one it is at this point, but, um, we'll move to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, Kelly.
Second, Linda.
Okay, Jenny, please call roll.
This is Casper.
Yes.
This is O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
The Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Great, thank you. Have a great evening, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.